So, welcome to the Board Policy Committee for February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We have three board members here. I think two student representatives, Jackson Weinberg and Miss Amy Shu, as well as many staff.
We also have Jillian here.
Yeah.
Oh, and Jillian as well. Okay, so, uh, three students are here. So, why don't we, why don't we start right in with, and I'm gonna try to manage my cat, sorry. So, uh, we have another very, very full agenda. So, I'm gonna try to move us along as efficiently and effectively as we can. We're talking about a number of policies today. Let's start with the climate crisis response. And we're gonna hear today from Aaron Pressburg, who's going to give us an update on what they have, the, on the data points that they have currently available, you know, what we, what PPS currently tracks and what other organizations track, and kind of what the implications are for how we think about this policy. So, Aaron, you wanna take it away?
Sorry about that. Um, so can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so my name's Aaron Pressburg. I'm the Senior Program Manager for Energy and Sustainability with PPS. Um, I work in the Facilities Department. So, my goal today is to not dive into the details of how we should try to reduce our carbon emissions, but kind of take one step back and figure out how do we track it? What is involved in looking at certain operations? And what we should track, and I'll share some examples on industry standards, as well as other districts in the city of Portland as well. Um, so first off, just a quick overview on greenhouse gases. So, scientific evidence has shown us that over the last hundred and fifty years, that most of the greenhouse gases that have been emitted into the atmosphere have been from human activities, mostly centered around burning fossil fuels. So, you know, a couple of examples of greenhouse gases that we'll be looking at are carbon dioxide and methane. Those are mostly from burning fossil fuels, such as coal, natural gas, and transportation fuels, like gasoline and diesel. Methane is another big one. Uh, the other two that I have listed on here are more, more centered around agricultural and industrial processes. So, really, carbon dioxide and methane are the, are the two main ones that are gonna be from district operations, um, as far as our, our greenhouse gas overview looks. There's gonna be a lot of information here, so feel free to jump in with any questions, too. So, industry standards, and these are, these are specified by the U.S. EPA. There's three different scopes we can look at. Uh, Scope One is centered around what the district directly burns as a fossil fuel. So, this means all the natural gas we consume and all the vehicle transportation that is, that is used through, you know, district fleet and school buses. So, this is really just looking at what are we directly burning? What fossil fuels are the district responsible for burning? Now, Scope Two takes it one step further and brings in electricity generation. So, we would look at the kilowatt hours that we use as a district, and then we would, you know, work with the utilities to look at how that electricity is generated on average. So, is it coming from fossil fuels like natural gas and coal? Or is it coming from renewables like solar and wind? And, you know, any, any of those renewables would have a zero-carbon factor, and, you know, the fossil fuels would have, have an impact on our carbon footprint. Um, so that's Scope One and Two. Scope Three gets into the more of the indirect emissions that we emit. So, this is looking at both upstream and downstream of direct district operations. So, while it also includes Scope One and Two, uh, we throw in things like waste disposal. So, that'd be an example of a downstream impact from the district. So, things that are going to the landfill, recycling, things like that. But then we're also looking at production and transportation of commodities that we purchase, such as food and building construction materials. We're looking at employee and staff commutes, student commutes, uh, any air travel that's related to district operations, and wastewater treatment. So, once you get into Scope Three, there's a lot of things that happen before the district, after the district, and there are a lot of things that are, become increasingly difficult to measure. But, you know, it depends on where we wanna, um, how far we wanna take it. And then the next few slides, I'll kind of describe what that means for PPS end-use. So, this is just a chart explaining those, you know, same scopes I just went over, but how they relate to PPS. So, Scope, looking at Scope One, you know, we're using natural gas for space heating, water heating, kitchen and cooking. So, just to give you guys an idea of kind of how we use that as an emission source. For transportation, in Scope One, we're only looking at district official vehicles, school buses, maintenance vehicles, nutrition services, any official district fleet. Um, and then for electricity, like I, I described, you know, we would look at the emission source of that electricity, but as far as the end-use goes, you know, we're using that for lighting, cooling, plug loads, ventilation, some space heating, depending on the site. The last column is just a quick overview of like, where does that data come from? You know, most of what I just described is already good data, because we're getting it right from the utilities, or we're getting it from departments that operate these vehicles, where we can look at miles per gallon, miles driven, and what the fuel source is. So, as far as the first two scopes go, it's, uh, the data's really, really available, and it's pretty simple to, to track that.
Aaron, what, what's a plug load?
Plug load is anything you're plugging in, so computers, cell chargers, appliances. Yeah. Thanks for asking. So, Scope Three, I have two slides to describe this. So, looking at waste disposal, you know, this data isn't perfect. Uh, we would have to work with our haulers to figure out kind of an industry average. So, even if we were to source this data, it wouldn't be as exact as our utility or our transportation data, because basically, you know, we're assuming that every time we lift a dumpster, that it's completely full, whereas we know sometimes it's not. So, the data's not perfect there. It's, it's obtainable. But I just wanted to be upfront that it's never gonna be quite exact. Wastewater treatment?
Aaron, before we leave the waste disposal, uh, so when you say it would be industry average, does that mean that, we would have, I mean, industry average wouldn't, wouldn't be terribly useful, I would think, for us to monitor our own usage or track any, any decreases? So, are you saying that we would have to, um, develop specific protocols with the vendors we use in order to accurately track our own usage?
Yeah, so some, some trucks have scales on them, um, and that's really the best way to do it, because we can track it by weight. But when I say industry average, um, they're, they typically, you know, the, the industry's not quite there yet in actual tracking for weights, because, you know, they're just going from site to site, picking up dumpster after dumpster, all different customers. So, basically, they say, okay, an average, you know, five-cubic-yard dumpster recycling, you know, is going to emit this amount of carbon, and an average five-cubic-yard dumpster of landfill-bound garbage emits this amount of carbon. So, it's just a, an industry average calculation. Unfortunately, the best the industry has right now, we're not going to get exact weights anytime in the near future unless we decided to, uh, put scales on our dumpsters, which would be something we could look into, but, um, there's all sorts of, you know, issues and unimplementation, I foresee with that as well.
Okay, thanks.
So, for wastewater treatment, um, this would include the energy and emissions associated with treating domestic water. So, anything that goes into the sewer goes to the treatment plant. Um, there's a bunch of chemicals they use. You know, it's a big methane emitter, which is a greenhouse gas. So, we have good data available, obviously, through our utility bills on the water that we use, so we know what water's going into the sewer system. But we don't know, what we'd have to work with the city on is to figure out how exactly they treat the water and what kind of emissions factors into that calculation. So, that's pretty obtainable data. Now, the next one is transportation field that's non-district fleet. This is probably the hardest one to track, because you're relying on survey data that you have to send out to staff and students and families. You know, you'd have to get, um, any employees that are using their personal vehicles for any kind of district. You know, going from BESC to a school, for instance, in their personal vehicle, they would have to, you know, keep a log of that. And, you know, we have some means of tracking that in some ways, but it's not, it's, it's gonna be pretty resource-intensive to continue to accurately track all of that. So, I'd say as far as the data goes in Scope Three, that's one of the hardest ones. And the last two, three, uh, last two Scope Three emissions would be, uh, commodities, and I'm using two examples here that would, that would apply to PPS, food and building construction materials. So, like I said, we're looking at the upstream production and transportation of that. So, take school cafeteria food. We would need to work with our manufacturers, uh, our food growers and our distributors, looking at how is that food produced, where is it coming from, how is it getting transported from, you know, the farm to the district, um, and that kind of thing. Same with building construction materials. This is a, probably even tougher, because we're dealing with, you know, commodities that are coming from other countries. We're looking at concrete and steel. As we continue to pass bonds, this is an important piece of our carbon footprint if we decide we wanna do Scope Three. But it's not exactly something we can control under, um, direct district operations. So, it would, same thing with food. We'd have to work with manufacturers and distributors to figure out how that material's getting sourced and how it's getting to the district. So, along with the, the non-district transportation, this is, I would say this is, um, pretty hard data to source.
So, uh, two, two questions, um, on the, uh, Scope Three. Do we have a sense of magnitude comparing any of those to Scope One and Two?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to that in the next slides. So, perfect transition, Scott. Thank you. So, I have three examples of some organizations, two school districts in the city of Portland. So, San Francisco Unified School District has been tracking their carbon for a couple of years now. They landed on just a straight Scope Two, so they're not including anything in Scope Three. Um, and this is their breakdown between energy use and fleets. So, you know, three-quarters of that is coming from their district energy use, whereas a quarter is coming from their school buses and other district fleet. And just as a side note, they have a carbon-neutral goal by 2040. So, that's, that's ten years more aggressive than the current one that's written into our policy. Um, I will say that they have the advantage of having an a hundred percent renewable electricity grid, because they have a lot of hydropower. So, basically, um, anything, anything they use throughout their electricity is already carbon-neutral. So, when they're looking at facility energy, that's really just their, their natural gas use. Whereas for us, there are fossil fuel mix into our electricity grid. So, that's gonna look different depending on who your, your utility is. This is a district called Adams Twelve Five-Star Schools in North Denver. They have about fifty schools. They decided to track all of Scope Three. So, as you can see, you know, this big section here is still two-thirds of their entire scope when they include Scope Three, and that is district energy use. The second biggest portion is what they're calling consumption-based resources, which is, would be equivalent to how I described the food and building construction materials, um, and this, for their sake, they decided to draw the line at just food and paper use. So, if, if they included construction, that would be a much bigger portion, uh, of this chart. I did wanna mention that waste is only one percent here when you look at the entire picture, whereas wastewater treatment's eight percent, so it's significantly bigger. They added a couple more things in here, like refrigerant use, TND losses, transfer, transmission and distribution. Um, and that's just, you know, as you're trans, as you're transporting electricity from the utility to your building, you're gonna get some efficiency losses there, so they're tracking that as well. Interestingly enough, they do not have a carbon reduction goal, but they are doing a great job tracking all their, all of their, uh, carbon emissions. With one exception, they, um, the one thing in Scope Three they decided not to include was the employee and student commutes. So, as far as transportation goes, they're only doing district fleet. And they, they took out that one, because, and when I asked them why, they said, you know, it was just really hard to track, and they, the district didn't have direct control over it, so they decided to leave it out. So, that gives you a good breakdown of what the difference between Scope Two and Scope Three looks like for, for a school district. Either way, your dis, your energy use is gonna be a large portion of that, of that chart.
Do you think that this, um, if you go back, do, do you think that that sort of distribution of, components, more or less aligns with what we would probably get if we were tracking?
Yeah, it depends on the utility. Some already factor that in. So, like, some utilities will give you their carbon factors, depending on what the source of the emissions are coming from, electricity. And they also will give you kind of a standard. I think two percent is kind of the standard, but some, um, some utilities will say, like, on their website, exactly what their typical, you know, transmission losses would be. And I'm not sure exactly what it is for PG or Pacific Power, but, um, if we decided to track that, then, yeah, we would look into that.
Yeah, I, I thought TND was a lot higher. And that's why they're playing around, trying to do some superconductor kind of stuff a couple of years ago. A lot of talk about that in the grid. But I, I noticed that, uh, it looks like vehicle fleet compared to energy use is a lot different for Denver than for San Francisco. Is that, is that correct? Seems like the previous slide,
Yeah.
vehicles was like twenty-five percent compared to, it's like a three-to-one, and this is more like a ten-to-one.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, it, it depends on what your fuel sources are. You know, um, I, I believe that, you know, San Francisco's a pretty small area as far as an urban school district goes, so, you know, they're not driving as many miles. You know, so it just, there's a lot of factors that are involved in that.
This looks like,
Sorry?
This looks like, looks like San Francisco, they're grabbing more than in North Denver.
Oh, right. Yeah, I'm not, so part of that is because they have more included in their chart here. But I, I don't know the details on how they broke that down. There's just a lot of factors that go into transportation, such as miles driven and fuel source. But yeah, we can dig into that, um, as we get further in this process.
I think the other thing to think about is which of these, um, is easiest to manage downward? Like, like, I don't know that wastewater, we can do a whole lot about that, but maybe I'm wrong there.
Right, and I'll, we'll get to that at the end of the presentation. We have like some criteria that we're looking at, um, when we're gonna make this decision. So, um, I know Rita, you, you asked about the city of Portland, so I wanted to throw this in here. They are somewhere in between these two districts, so they're tracking Scope Two plus waste. And their reasoning is, they wanted, just as you said, Scott, they wanted to keep it within their operational control. So, they're looking at things that are directly controlled by, uh, by city operations, which is, you know, building energy use, transportation and waste. So, it's very, very much within their scope. They have a goal of reducing their carbon fifty percent by 2030. And as you can see here, they split those out a little bit differently, because they did it by fuel source. But most of this, actually, all of this is Scope Two, except for the one percent of waste. So, waste, um, and they're only tracking their landfill waste, too. They're not, they're not tracking the recycling impact. So, um, you know, organizations are gonna do it a little bit differently from here and there, but, um, I think the, the general theme between these three is that building energy use is gonna be the bulk of our emissions, um, which isn't very surprising. And, and waste, while it is, you know, a piece of it, it's pretty small. We've seen it at one percent for both of these. And, you know, there's more effort in tracking that for not as, you know, not as much opportunity to reduce as far as our total carbon picture goes. But, you know, I just wanna make sure that everybody is aware that it's, it's a factor. It's a very visible, um, thing when we're talking about carbon and sustainability, but, um, it's not gonna be as big as transportation or, or energy use. Which brings me to my last slide, um, and this is our official recommendation. My goal was to give you guys kind of an overview of all this data and how it works and how it's tracked. But I wanted to give an official recommendation from my, my team. So, we, we would like the district to track Scope Two plus waste and water treatment. And this isn't, you know, we can discuss the pros and cons to all of this, but, um, basically, the four criteria we used is we wanted to make sure that what we're tracking accounts for a substantial percentage of our emissions. We wanna make sure that the data is readily available and, you know, somewhat feasible to be tracking on an annual basis. Uh, we wanna be able to actually make improvements towards these emissions reductions. So, we don't wanna just track a bunch of things and not be able to do much about it. So, that was a big, a big criteria we were looking at. And then the last one is, you know, we want it to be visible. We want it to have an educational component. We want people to understand the, that impact. And Scott, to answer your question about the wastewater treatment, it's, you know, you're right, we can't really do much about how that, how our water's treated, but we can reduce our water use, you know, which, you know, which, we have some impact over that. So, that one's kind of in the middle. And, you know, because it's a Scope Three item, same with waste, you know, there's pros and cons there. But this is our recommendation, and, um, we can discuss if you guys have any more questions.
Um, I have a question about the wastewater. So, I, I seem to remember that a while back, PPS did a big push to get low-flow toilets. Do you have any idea how many, how many toilets were replaced? Well, let me put it another way. How, how far along are we in that? What's the status? Is, is that something that would yield, that a focus on it would yield a big change? Or have we already kind of gotten whatever reductions we're gonna get?
Yeah, so basically, we did two major water conservation projects, and, and, you know, the bulk of our domestic water use is from toilet flushing, so that, that's our biggest opportunity. The two big projects were we, we put in dual-flush valves in every toilet that's already been completed. The problem is, you know, it's the push-down for two, push-pull-up for one. So, most people are just gonna push it down regardless. In our new, you know, bond projects, we're putting in low-flow, um, toilet valve. So, it's just gonna flush out, you know, one-point-two gallons as opposed to one-point-six. And then the other thing we did is, um, I don't know how many of you have been in, in our, our men's, or boys' restrooms around the district with the Florida, you know, floor-mounted urinals that are just one bank across the entire, entire thing that were on a continuous flush. And that's how they were designed, you know, back when these schools were built. So, they basically flush, um, you know, every fifteen minutes, twenty-four-seven. So, we went in and put in occupancy sensors on those, so that they wouldn't be flushing overnights and on weekends. So, they still flush every fifteen minutes if the sensor's tripped, but the idea is if nobody's walking in there, they, they won't continuously flush. So, those were the two big projects we did recently.
So, do we have a, a sense of the, um, the savings from, from that?
We do. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but yeah.
Yeah, could, um, well, first of all, I think this, um, is great work, really helpful to see. And I do think, like, there's a lot of myths about, um, things, like, including the urinals. There's been this, uh, sort of ongoing conversation about them, about a lot of other things. And I think it would be good if we can quantify where we have made steps to be able to show, sort of the larger community, um, of things that PPS is doing, and then how we've quantified them. Because otherwise, people get stuck in the narrative, like, the last time I was in the, you know, boys' bathroom in the schools, they were doing X, and it's like, well, it hasn't been like that for five years or ten years or whatever. So, I think there's some, like, some storytelling, um, that we can do around things that we've done. But from a larger point, I, one of the questions I would have is, um, so I really appreciate the recommendation here. As a starting point, one of the things I'm wondering about, and, uh, I don't know who this question's directed to, but, um, in a lot of the other sustainability work that we've done, so that the low-hanging fruit is of high impact and those items that you can control. But to get to that, sort of the next tranche of things you don't control, often it requires sort of negotiation with the person or the entity that has control or the, um, or some sort of, uh, coalition that has some, um, sort of negotiating power, authority with the entity that has, um, control. And I'm wondering if we've thought about that. It is a step harder, but I'm wondering if that's something that we've considered or...
Yeah, I mean, we can take, so Scope Two, for instance, if we're looking at electricity use, we can control that, right? We can control end-use, how much electricity we use, but we can't control how that electricity is generated by the utility. But we know that our utilities in Oregon have goals to become renewable by a certain date. So, we know eventually that if we, you know, can get to that date, which I think is either twenty-forty or twenty-fifty, depending on the utility, we know if we can get to that date, that any electricity we use is eventually going to be carbon-neutral, if it's a hundred percent renewable, regardless of the amount of electricity that we use. So, we know that by setting that goal, you know, we're gonna be pushed along by the utility's efforts towards our carbon reduction goal. But yeah, you're right about, that's, that's what's problematic about Scope Three in a lot of ways, is it's very much out of our control. There are a lot of things that we have to rely on our contractors and vendors, you know, to make sure that we get, you know, accurate data for one, and two, that they are, you know, aligned with our goals to help us reach those, these, the, those carbon-neutral goals. So, it's just, you know, it's a matter of how, how much do we wanna lean into that on Scope Three? And how much do we wanna just take on the responsibility of Scope Two? The good news is we can, we can fall somewhere in between if we decide. We can't, we're not just bound by Scope Two and Three. We could, you know, decide to pick and choose, um, like the city did.
Can I ask a question about electricity? For residential customers, now, I'm PGE, I, I don't know about, I don't know whether this is available or the other one, but, um, for residential customers, you can pay a bit extra and, um, and to get, um, electricity from renewable sources only. Do you know if that is even available for commercial customers?
It is, yeah. So, they have that program for commercials as well. So, that, that gets into the conversation of, is our carbon reduction gonna be including offsets that we purchase? Because that's technically an offset. Or are we actually tracking and focusing on district operations? And, you know, a Um, and you know, a lot of corporate entities will take that route while they're, you know, Amazon, for instance, will. You know, purchase carbon offsets as part of their goals, um, to offset their impact. Um, is that something that a, that a public entity or a school district should do? I don't know if I can answer that question, but it's just something to think about. Um, it's definitely a strategy, it could be part of, part of our strategy, but, um. I think that's something we would wanna discuss during our community engagement process.
So I wanna, I wanna throw out an idea, maybe a bad idea. Um, but if there's another. Um. Piece of this that we can measure, that students can somehow participate in. Um. And, and so there's a sort of s- student or school behavior. Uh, piece to this, where, so that's students can see their contribution towards. Lessening greenhouse gas emission by something that happens at the school. Um, that takes it one step beyond the visible and educational component into a. Um, we're part of the solution kind of component. I, I don't know if that's practical, or if that. Is, again, is a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, behavioral energy conservation is, you know, a strategy. It, as part of saving energy, which then, you know, reduces our, our carbon emissions from the energy use, um. But it's not exactly something you could attribute specifically, right? If we see a reduction on our energy bill. And we know that there's all these other factors involved, it might be hard to, you know, actually quantify that. Um. If that answers your question. I mean, it's definitely a, a part of the, the entire equation. And we wanna support that, but I don't know if we could actually track.
Right, so it, it may not be trackable in the sense of carbon. Um, but it might be trackable in terms of. I, I don't know, may, maybe a waste reduction goal at every school or something like that, um.
Right.
That, that students could be part of, and staff as well, um.
Yeah, like if we know that a school implemented a food waste program where they're diverting, you know, cafeteria food waste from the landfill. We can then quantify that and say, okay, like, we know that we diverted X amount. And then we can convert that into, you know, you'd have to weigh it. Um, which I know that some, some schools do, they do weigh, weigh the food waste, so they can track it. Um, then you can convert it into CO2 equivalent, so we're kind of getting into the weeds here, but it's.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I was just looking for a, a piece of that, that would be a, a direct student engagement. Around taking action. Um, anyway. Thanks, this is really, uh, great stuff. Um.
Yeah.
The work you've done.
I'm happy to answer any other questions, um, I mean, I want this, this PowerPoint, you know, is, is wordy enough. So that you guys can go back and look at it and read through it, and hopefully it'll still make sense. Um, and then we also developed, um, as part of the, the board materials, we developed a more detailed. Um, PDF that has, you know, kind of more, just more information about all of this as well.
I, I had a question. Can I go first, Rita? Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, you said that there were, you know, pros and cons, and so I just wondered, like, what? Of this, doing phase two with, or step two with wastewater, what would you see as the biggest drawbacks to, to going with that, um, option?
Yeah, I would say anything in scope three, um, which includes wastewater. Um, the biggest cons would be, it takes extra effort to track it. Um, which, you know, upfront would probably be more work, but once we get it going on an annual basis, it would, you know, be more streamlined. Um, and the other con would be, it's, it's not completely in the district's control to limit. The emission source.
Yeah, so what I, what I was asking is, what do you see as any drawbacks to the plan you're recommending, which is the, um, phase two, stage two?
Um, scope two plus waste and wastewater, wastewater treatment, you mean, or just scope two? Um, so for scope two, there's really no, no drawbacks. We can control all of that, and we know, and like I said, we know that. Electricity grid's gonna continue to become more renewable, um, so that works in our favor as well. Um, and all that data is extremely easy to source as of now, so I would say scope two by itself, there's really no drawbacks. Um, it's really once we get into the scope three items that, that it's, you know, a little bit more out of our control and harder to track. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you so very much. I'm in the car, so that's why my camera is off. Uh, I am not driving, however, so. And I am, I am in a hybrid, so I feel, you know, at least if I'm driving around while we're talking about environmental things, I'm not using as much gas.
Can I ask a question about, um, construction?
Yes.
Um. So I get that, um. Finding a way to track construction materials would be difficult, um. Um, but. And, and I make no claims to expertise in this, but, um, I have read. That concrete is, um, a major contributor globally to, um. To greenhouse gases. Um. Is it, uh, i- if we can't actually track, um. The, the impact. Uh, and I'm, I'm gonna throw something out that may be completely crazy, but, um. Would it be, would it be even possible? To include in our ed specs or future construction that, um. Non-concrete, non-plastic materials should be considered when possible?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the industry's moving in that direction. It's definitely not quite there. Um, I know that the, um, multiple pathways building that's going in at the Benson campus right now is looking at. Alternatives to concrete, um, that's kind of a pilot, so there's definitely opportunities there, um. And I don't know if the district would wanna make the decision to, you know, exclude concrete from our design standards. I don't think that's quite possible just yet. Um, but we could definitely, you know, look at limiting it. Um, that's for sure, and you're right about concrete being a big carbon factor. Um, it's definitely, um, one of the biggest in the industrial sector.
So recognizing that we might not be able to measure that, is it still worthwhile to? Um. Factor that into our, our.
Yeah, so there, you know, the carbon picture is kind of split into two things, like there's your operational carbon, right? Um, which is mostly what we directly admit, um, through building energy use and transportation and things like that. Um, but then there's your, what you call embodied carbon, which is, you know, the carbon you're using to build structures and, you know. And, and it's a, it's a really big impact, but, you know, the reason that the scope one, two, and three, um, definitions exist is because. You know, these scope three emissions for concrete is scope three to us, but to the concrete manufacturing company. It's their scope one, you know, it's their, it's part of their industrial process of their, of their building. Um, so. You know, it's being tracked at some level from some organization. It's just a matter of, do we wanna include that in our overall carbon footprint? And that's where, that's where we decide, okay, how far are we taking it, scope one, two, or three, or somewhere in between two and three? Um, it's not that it's impossible to track, it's just a lot more difficult, and the, the da- the data's not gonna be as. As perfect as like our utility data will be.
Yeah, so, so I guess what I'm saying is, instead of. Tracking the carbon emitted by whatever concrete we use in future construction processes. Uh, we just set a, I don't know, set a goal for reducing concrete use. In new schools by ten percent off of whatever our standard has been. Uh, so far in the bond program, and again, I'm, I'm just, I'm making stuff up here, um.
Yeah, it's certainly a good, a good sustainability goal to have something like that.
Yeah, and, and so we, I, I wanna, you know. We tend to track what's measured and change our behavior based on what's measured. Um, and if there's an important factor that we don't have that direct carbon measurement for. That doesn't mean it might not be part of our policy. Um, so it's not something we measure in terms of carbon footprint, but it's something that we look to change our behavior on. Um, no- knowing we're not gonna know what exactly that impact is, but we know it's an impact. Um, and, and we could even. Ballparks, um, average, knowing, knowing that that number is wrong, but. Um, but to say, well, well, we at least got a, a ten percent reduction. Um, and it's significant. We don't know exactly how significant because it's hard to measure. But it's a piece of, uh, piece of our strategy.
Yeah, the city does something similar to that.
Could you, um, could we ask you to look at that and see if you could come up with some? Some kind of recommendation, uh, around that, um. That we might incorporate somewhere in the policy, or, or, or in other mechanisms that, um. Like in the ed specs or something, um. Could we ask you to do that?
Yeah, so you mean keeping it, keeping it separate from the, the scope emissions that we track, but having some sort of. Separate goal around reducing concrete in our buildings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, or even, I, I mean, again, I. I, this is received wisdom, um, interpreted by me. Um, it, I gather that there are efforts underway to make, um, lower carbon concrete. Um, so maybe. I don't know, find, if we could find some way to come up with language that would accommodate technological change. You know, in foreseeable future.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, definitely.
Okay. That would be great. Um, any other questions from anybody?
Yeah, I, I guess what we're asking for is non-measured, uh, in terms of carbon impact. But, uh, likely contributors where we could have. Um, you know, we're, we're looking at what's, what's the biggest bang for the buck, or what's? What's the best way to make, to have the biggest impact on our carbon footprint, measured or not? Uh, to see some of those, we can't directly measure it, but we know it has an impact kind of things, concrete being one. Um, plastics, um, maybe being another. Um. So again, we might not have that same kind of numerical greenhouse gas measure, but. Some other kind of measure in terms of usage, I don't know.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Um, this is great. Thank you, Aaron. Um. This is gonna be very helpful when we get down to actually, you know, writing the policy. Um. I wanted to give a little update on community engagement planning for this policy. Um, several of us. Uh, the, the committee subcommittee, um, and staff met with the, um, climate justice group. Um, to talk about, to, to learn from them what kinds of community engagement efforts they have done to date. Um, and talk about how we can coordinate community engagement efforts going forward. Um, we are still, um, developing that plan. And, um, in light of what is happening at the school level. Uh, for students and, um, and parents and principals and, and teachers around. Preparing for reopening, um, it was suggested that. The, c- our community engagement efforts around this policy will likely. Have to be postponed, um, until probably at the earliest sometime in April. Um, and from where I sit, that's, I, I. I, I mean, I, I think it's understandable, and, and we have to, we, we have to be aware of the burden that's being placed. On many fronts, on, um, parents and community members around, uh, engagement stuff on, on many levels. Um, but in addition to that, uh, that will give us more time to work on the policy itself and, um. But, you know, get further along in the, in crafting the language. So I just wanted to kind of give an update that, that's sort of where we stand. Um, I wanted to check in with Shanice. Did I get all that right, Shanice? Anything you wanna add?
I got my phone from you. No, I think that's, that sounds about right, that we'll, we'll have an opportunity to, to rebuild off of this stage here.
Okay. I, I'm wondering if it's possible, and I, um, if somehow in some sort of visualization. Tool or document, we could share, like, where things are with the broader community. It's just. It's super hard for people right now to track where, where things are if you don't happen to, um. Cause there, there's no, like, running into people at schools, um, or anywhere, um. So I'm wondering if there's some way, for example, if we've got a policy, like, let's just take today's agenda. It's like they're all kind of in different stages in the policy, and we have that grid, kind of, here's what we're thinking, but if. If there is a distinct, like, community engagement period that we somehow. Mark that, so people would know, like, hey, this is the point in time when we're expecting to engage communities or key stakeholders. Um, cause otherwise, it's, I mean, I'm having a hard time tracking where we are, um, in the process, and. This isn't, this is more of a function of the sort of pandemic and. More of the isolation that comes with it than anything, anything else, or any, anything, like, we're doing things differently. It's just we have a big agenda, and it's, it's hard for me to keep track of, like, did we do the community engagement at the front end? Who was it with? Or are we doing it during the twenty-one days, or is it something after the twenty-one days? Um, I'm sorry, I'm just having a hard time tracking where. Where we are, and whether there's some sort of tool to, or even sort of market on the larger grid of, like, here was the community engagement?
Julia, I agree. I'm having a hard time tracking the community engagement piece as well.
And again, it's not a criticism in any way, it's more, I'm sitting at home with like seven policies, and I'm kind of like, wait. And some of them, you know, we've had in committee for, you know, a year and a half, or, you know, a longer period of time, and it's just like. When's that happening?
Julie, would it be helpful, which is all the committee members, would it be helpful if on the, the webpage for the policy committee? There is, these are the policies currently under, uh, review. So not just, not contemplated, but actually have been before and aren't yet to first reading. With some sort of very summary status. I, I don't think there's a cookie cutter approach because community engagement comes at various stages. And it varies by policy and subject matter, but we could, we could certainly in a summary fashion. Highlight what's happened and what we know is coming, and keep it as current as possible. I'm trying to figure out how we get to the.
And Liz, I think that that's one of the strengths of our community engagement, is that it's not cookie cutter, that we're being. Really intentional about how to do it. It's just, I, I'm forgetful, and I get confused about where we are where, so. I think having some sort of tracking or graph or chart would help me greatly.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, maybe a Google form, like, saying what it is. Uh, what stage we're. Uh, what stage we're at and like a brief summary of what the policy is about, sort of thing. And when we're next going to be talking about it, um, in our agenda, that would be really helpful.
So Liz, I would say yes, and some of these suggest, suggestions and always like, you know, here's a link if you want to provide, you know, some feedback. So it's not just like, hey, if you.
So I, I think, um, yeah, some kind of almost not a timeline, but a process flow that might have, um, initial drafting as one step. Uh, there might be an initial community engagement before a final drafting, final community engagement. First reading, kind of a flow to it. Um, that it at least has some, some steps, even, even though we know that community engagement is messier than that and.
Drafting is messier than that too, though. I mean, I hesitate to put final or descriptors that implies a repeatable process that has quite a bit of variability. I think drafting or consideration, I, I want to not be misleading to folks about where we are and what it means. And that's what makes me a little uncomfortable about. That, but I, we can absolutely get something that I think will work. I'm giving you my, I'm probably shooting from the hip in ways that are helpful for this conversation right now, but.
But my, my observation of the process and maybe just my impression is that there's kind of an initial phase where we're playing around with a lot of stuff. And then a more honing in phase, uh, where we're, we, we've got some fairly well-defined pieces that were, we may, we may continue to alter and hone in, but we're, we're, we're kind of more there finish line in sight of a final draft. And I don't know, may, maybe that's my impression. And I don't know if that, that's how, and that's why I kind of broke it down like that. So maybe we should, I don't know, um, take this offline and talk about it and think about a way to.
What if staff box something up for you all to react to and see if that hits the mark?
That would be great.
Yeah.
Be happy to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is a lot of moving parts. So helping people have visibility to that is a great recommendation.
Yep.
If I may, our user guide for writing policies, I think can be a helpful tool. And, um, I think as we're trying to build some coherency clarity, um, around all of these processes. Um, and, and finding a way to map it back there that ultimately begins with that racial equity work. And so, um, uh, there could be a, a way that we articulate, um, what that means. And I'm happy to work with, with you all and, and the policy team.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Liz, do you think, do you think you might have something, um, that we'll be able to look at, at the next policy meeting in three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, um, so I think we're gonna stop there with the climate crisis response policy. Um, I am anticipating that, um, this policy will probably not be on the agenda for the next couple of meetings probably. Um, there's a lot of, uh, drafting that has to happen. Um, to, to bring in all those different pieces, the, all the information that we've, um, assembled. So, um, I, I just want to let people know that, um, the fact that it does not, it, it does not appear on an agenda does not mean that work is not happening. It means the work is being, being done by, uh, staff and the subcommittee. Um, and, you know, we're, we're trying to bring, the next time that this appears on the agenda, I think we'll be able to bring forth, um, a draft that we, we'll be able to actually kind of chew on as a committee. Um, so anyway. Is that Daniel, is the other question?
Oh, yes, sir. Oh, sorry. Um, speaking of the subcommittee, uh, I was wondering if it has been meeting? Because I believe I was supposed to be on the subcommittee for this policy and I have not got any invites.
Okay, um, I would say we have not been meeting. Formerly, um, we, we did have a, we did have one meeting with the climate justice group. Um, but I think that's really the only, I, I think that's the only time that the subcommittee has, has met at all. Um, but we'll make sure to include you on any, um, any meetings going forward. Okay? Okay.
I had a question, um, i- if, I thought these were just like informal work groups. Calling them a subcommittee means that they're like, if that's the formal name, then don't we have to publicly notice those and everything? I mean.
I don't know. I.
I'm actually asking, I'm actually asking Liz because if.
The, the intent is not to create a formal governance structure. They are an informal working group. So like to the extent lowercase s subcommittee is being used, it is not intending to signal anything more formal than that. In fact, it's, it's to help the work move along. So that we, there's more work done to present to the formal committee at each meeting.
Yeah, I guess I would just be careful if I was using that because if you're the public watching the meeting and you don't hear what the subcommittee is like, oh, there's a subcommittee or like, where are the subcommittees? It just, I, I think we need to be careful.
Okay, so I will, I, I will not use that term going forward. I will try to remember to call it work group. Um, if I slip at some point, somebody please stop me, Greg. Okay, um, we are at five oh three. That means we've been, um, meeting for about an hour. We had an agreement that since this is a three-hour meeting, once an hour, we would stop and have a, a break. Um, I'm inclined to do that right now. So, uh, if we could meet back here in five minutes, so five oh eight. And, uh, give it time to tank up on coffee again. Okay. Online. Um, the next policy we're gonna talk about is the student assignment policy. Um, and this is going to be, um, I, I think we're gonna step back and have a, a discussion about some concepts um, to guide, um, our approach to this policy. Uh, we only get about thirty minutes allocated to it. And, um, I'm gonna ask Scott to, uh, kind of lead this portion of the festivities. Um, if you could walk us through, um, the elements of the document that you sent out or that Roseanne sent out a little while ago. Um, and this is just a, um, a kind, a series of questions really, um, to help us think through what the, um, the purpose of the policy should be and kind of the different approaches that we could take. So Scott, you want to take it away?
Before Scott, before, Scott, before you start, I, I don't know what document you're referencing, Rita. Is there, was there something that wasn't with the board? I mean, I just printed out the committee materials. Was there something? And I could have missed it in the blackout.
Uh, no, this was just sent out probably an hour and a half ago, maybe two hours ago, maybe, uh, by Roseanne.
And it's, it's just something that I worked up this weekend. So again, th- this isn't a, a formal thing, but just something to get us oriented towards, um, I think the questions, kind of the big picture questions we want to look at when we're going through the policy.
Someone send it to me, cause Roseanne didn't.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I forgot to send that to you. I'll send it out to you guys.
Or how about, uh, how about putting it up on the screen just, cause I'm not gonna be able to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to do that. I've got it right here. Um, if I can drive the power to, yes, share a screen. Okay, does that work?
Yes.
Okay. So first thing is what, why are we dealing with this policy now? And number one, we've, you know, we've been dealing with boundary issues, um, for over, over ten to fifteen years now. Where we have a number of schools that are overcrowded and a number that are under enrolled. And I'm gonna skip down here, cause I, um, just listed out. Now I gotta figure out how I can do this. Okay, I gotta. Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to. Okay, there we go. So at the very end, the, these are schools that are well over capacity and these are the official capacity utilization numbers. And again, if we, if we talk to our principals, uh, a hundred percent is like every room is used. And really closer to eighty-five percent is what we should shoot for to allow some flexibility long-term and to allow for the inevitable ups and downs in enrollment. Um, that are just part of the future of things. Uh, but you can see there's a lot of schools and Grant is actually, I believe that even though nobody's there, it's over nineteen hundred now or something like that.
Yeah, it, it is, cause that's what the, um, the report that we got recently in the weekly.
Uh, um, so as you see, there's a lot of schools and this is all the schools at over eighty-five percent. Um, and then on the other hand, we've got some schools that are really underused. Um, of course Jefferson is under construction, uh, or will be and will be part of a, a broader community engagement about where we go with Jefferson, but a lot of schools are under-enrolled.
I have a question about Scott about the, um, so the over-enrolled and the under-enrolled in which the district actually controls enrollment. So like on the under-enrolled, like how Da Vinci could be under-enrolled when, unless things have changed, they used to always have a waiting list. And then how schools can be over-enrolled, like Odyssey and I don't know if you went back, there was another one that was like, we could totally control, I mean, because it's all the, by lottery, but, or like Sunnyside, how maybe Sunnyside can see this as a neighborhood boundary, but like how could Odyssey be o- over-enrolled because that, there's no neighborhood boundary. So that's all students that we let, let in.
Yeah, Odyssey, it may be because they moved from one building to another and that affected their actual facility space. Uh, I think just two years ago, because they were at, um, Hayhurst. But yes, the, all of this is under control, our control. And it's, it's been out of balance for a long time. I mean, I, I, uh, with Judy Brennan's help, prepared slides ten years ago to show to school board members. And we had the same, same kind of thing happening.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, yeah, this is all under our, our control. We just haven't been exercising control. So both, and of course, both states are not good for students. They affect how resources are allocated. We know that economies of scale affect, uh, resources. You know, our funding formula over the years, for example, has had thresholds around um, getting an extra, you know, getting a, an assist, assistant principal at the elementary level. Or, uh, how many counselors you got, how many office staff you got, uh, library, um, staff, et cetera. So this stuff really matters. Uh, secondly, we're running the process in southeast and we'll continue into northeast and north in the coming years. And, uh, this policy directly impacts how students, where they end up. And Jackson's nodding, yeah, total, totally get that. Uh, and we ran into that in our discussion of southeast at the board level in terms of who gets into Calogan, who isn't. Um, and so the current policy, and again, it's, uh, what do we say, two thousand six? Two thousand eight, I can't remember. It has some values and choices baked in that I think it's time we, uh, looked at those and either affirmed them uh, or changed them. And in some cases, they need clarification, even if we agree to what we think the policy says. Um, there may be some gaps and I don't think, uh, any kind of equity analysis, uh, racial equity was, was done. And again, we saw that play out in the discussion on Creston. Where, uh, a number of students, we decided to send back to their neighborhood school. Most of those students were students of color, low-income students. And I, 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 I would say whether, whether that decision was correct or not, I don't think we did any kind of equity analysis around that. We just said, here's what the rules are. Um, finally, um, there's a gap between what we need to do in the short term and what makes sense for policy in the long term. If, if we were balanced now, um, then I think we need a policy that, um, on a regular basis examines boundaries and enrollments, um, makes fairly minimal changes to keep that balance going. Would, uh, have very little impact on students. We probably wouldn't be moving students, um, from one school to another in the middle of their school career, for example. Um, and you know, ideally we'd say, okay, next year's kindergarten class. There's gonna be a slight adjustment in terms of where, where you end up going to school. Um, I don't know if that actually can happen in the real world, considering how things change. But I, I think that's, that's where we want to end up. But short term, we need to move a lot of students in order to balance. Um, if we did ju- just did the minimal, it would take us years to get into balance. And again, if you look at some of the schools, um, on that, uh, over-under list, there's some of our, s- schools with high numbers of low income and students of color in them. So there's some real equity issues here. Um, and, and when I was on D-BRAC and we'll see, we looked at some of the factors listed in this policy and talked about them and realized a lot of those factors were out the window because we needed to make such large changes in order to rebalance the system. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna plunge on ahead and stop me if you have questions.
So Scott, what, what do you attempt, what are you attempting to do here? You're just explaining to us what's here? Or do you want to have a discussion or what, what's the, what's your pleasure in terms of how we're gonna interact with this?
Um, so what I'd like to do is what I, I'm, I've gone through and, and restated in shortened form what's in the policy. And then listed what I think, uh, and, and Rita helped with this. Uh, what we think are the central questions that we need to answer. And when we answer them, we'll get to the right policy. Um, or at least the right draft to take out, to get public feedback on. Um, so that's the, the purpose here is to bring everybody up to speed on what's in the current policy. And then what are the questions that we want to consider? Either, and, and against those values and choices that are baked into the current policy, what we may or. Either, and against those values and choices that are baked into the current policy, what we may or may not want to change going forward or clarify. So not to debate anything, but to raise questions. And so if going through here, yeah, join in if you think there's a question missing or if you think there's an additional question. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess just, and maybe, I'm not sure this was in the, the document you sent, but just a statement made that like, you know, those are things, we have all this within our control. I think there's some things that we have more control over than others because of our, you know, because we have the right to attend your neighborhood school, we really, you know, we, we have said that, you know, if you live in a neighborhood catchment area, you can go to that school. The question I was asking about is some of the schools I'm looking at there have programs that aren't like affiliated with a neighborhood. And so the district actually should have, the district staff and enrollment transfer should have control over that. I'm just kind of wondering, so maybe your example of Odyssey, they have a new building. But like, what about Da Vinci? Or is that the same thing with Sunnyside or these other, you know, places where we have programs like Ainsworth has, I know Ainsworth was on that list, they have a Spanish immersion program, but they also have a neighborhood program. So are they over capacity because of the neighborhood program or because they've built a Spanish immersion program that has put it over capacity?
Yeah, those, I mean, those, those are all good questions to ask in terms of a school by school basis. But I would say the answer to a lot of it is we haven't changed boundaries. I mean, Martin Luther King Jr. Has been under enrolled for two decades. And we have, that community has come to, come to the school board numerous times saying, when are you going to fix this? So a lot of these are boundary issues that we haven't addressed and we have no ongoing process. Again, we need, we need a long-term process that keeps us in balance. Short-term, we need some substantial boundary adjustments that are going to be moving a lot of students around.
Scott, can I interject here? In reference to Julia's question.
Welcome to our superintendent.
So there, this is one of three policies that govern student enrollment. So there's also an enrollment and transfer policy and a focus option policy. So some of, some of the programs that you're talking about would be governed by one or the other potentially or probably both of those other policies. The student assignment policy is currently limited to governing neighborhood schools. So I don't know if that helps.
Dr. Moore, if I may, I have my virtual hand raised. So adding to that, Director Moore, there might be interrelated policies and I appreciate the questions you're posing here, Director Bailey. This is one of those policies that also has more than one AD connected to it. If you read AD 410.049, Student Assignment Review and School Boundary Changes, it's not an AD. I don't recognize it. It actually reads as an additional policy. Liz and Mary, if you could look at it, it's, it's not written as an administrative directive. It's actually written as a policy and it speaks to assignment review and boundary changes. So as long as we're sort of, you know, talking about sort of where, where are we clear in sort of the board's policy direction, I just invite you to also look at that one. I think it's mistitled. I know that as we refresh and update, I think this one doesn't have the right header.
Yeah, and thanks for saying that. And I, I make reference to one of the ADs. Because so when a student moves out of their current neighborhood, the policy doesn't say anything about what happens to them. The AD says that students who, students can stay in their current school to the highest grade if they move out of their catchment area. So this is in the AD but not in the policy. And that's, that's one of those areas maybe that you're talking about that is this policy or not? What's, what do we want to determine? How we, what are the choices that families have? Is that something we want to affirm or not? Is again, one of the questions I would raise.
Can I, can I mention, so the policy does say students have the right to attend their neighborhood schools through the highest grade, which has been interpreted as once you, once you are part of a school, you have the right to stay there through the highest grade of that school, even if you move. So it's, this is one of those areas where I think the policy is ambiguous and the AD has stepped in. But yeah, I agree, we need to clarify what we actually mean.
Or in the case that I'm raising, it states, it has statements like the superintendent shall have, like, that's not an operational AD.
Yep. So what we have is a, is a system where we have a substantial number of students every year who opt out of their neighborhood school through, either through a lottery process or through a hardship petition. Or they move, but continue going to their old school. And again, in the bigger picture, as we look at this whole package of policies, it's raising questions about where do we want to, how's this working? And where do we go from here?
Scott, one thing we might want to put in somewhere here or consider for sort of stepping back from is we, one of the first board meetings in July, I think the first board meeting in July of 2017, we were asked by community members to adopt a right to return to albina, which we subsequently did by nature of a, of a resolution. And I don't know if, again, sort of making decisions by a resolution that aren't connected to a policy or that could potentially be in conflict with the policy. I don't know if that's something that we want to anchor, anchor into the formal policy or not, but just something for consideration because that's, that's another thing that's, you know, we're talking about Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary School that maybe another thing, because I know we were looking at that school in Boise Elliott Humboldt.
Woodlawn.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tubman. Yeah, that's a great point. So what the policy says, you know, it starts off with a purpose, which we probably want to look at and perhaps change. Provide some definitions, which I think the way that we're doing policy now is we've been moving definitions to the end. And then as a basic statement saying, you know, you're assigned to your neighborhood school based on where you live. And then as Rita pointed out, you have the right to stay there through your highest grade. The exceptions are if you're receiving special education services or ELL services or you're assigned to an alternative program. And then I raise a bunch of, sorry.
Hey Scott, can I just put an, can I just put an asterisk on that statement you just made?
Please.
I, I would like to know, you know, what about our current thinking and our current facilities, especially for example, if all of our facilities are going to be ADA compliant? In theory, we should be, be able to, we do a better job now at providing services in all schools and like, instead of just having a sort of general, hey, this, you can go to your neighborhood except, school except for maybe these people are exempted out. Is, I'm not super comfortable with that being just this large exemption, like we may or may not be able to find a place in your neighborhood school for you if you fit into these categories. And I think if, if somebody is not being able to go to their neighborhood school, if they're an English language learner or special ed, there better be a pretty good reason why not versus just, hey, we can move them around where we have space. So I'd, I'd like to have a longer discussion about that current exemption.
Can I suggest that we not have a longer discussion because many of us have been talking about this since 2008? So I, I'd like actually a shorter discussion, but yes.
Okay, let's.
I meant not today is what I meant.
Yeah, I've noted that, Julia. There you go. Thanks. Right, okay. So again, the policy doesn't say what to do if students move out of their catchment area. That's treated in an AD. So we should weigh in on if we want to put that into policy. I think there's pros and cons for keeping the current, at least what's in the AD. For example, a number of students are forced to move because of financial hardship of their family. We know that for those students, having to shift school, particularly in mid-year is not helpful to their education. So maybe this is something we want to, an idea we want to keep in policy. At least in how we work things. But there's, again, probably pros and cons to that, that we should assess out at a later date. And then things get complicated with boundary changes. So again, the current policy is if there's a boundary change, students can stay in their current school. Which means the impact of a boundary change will be very gradual over three, four, five, six years. Again, pros and cons to that. And again, there's, there's, long-term, if we were more balanced and we were making smaller changes, maybe that makes sense. Short-term, a lot of people have weighed in to say that's, that's not workable. And then things get more complicated if we throw in grade configurations, reconfigurations. So I posed a question for students who live in the old catchment area of a feeder school that now live outside the new catchment area and are in a grade that is being shifted to a different school, do they get to follow their cohort or not? And again, there's pros and cons to that, but that's a question we need to specifically address that's not in current policy.
I have the answer to that.
What?
I have the answer to that.
Yeah. I bet you do.
My answer would be if it's at a natural delineation between schools, like between fifth and sixth grade, they don't get to stay with their cohort, but if it's in a place where it's not a natural delineation between schools, like seventh and eighth grade, then they get to stay with their cohort. But, you know, maybe other people have a different answer.
Yeah, and that's, that's one answer we might land on. So I, again, want to make sure we get the right questions up there and then we can do a pros, cons and figure out how to go. There's also an issue for younger siblings. Particularly in our transfer policy, there's, younger siblings get to follow along with their older siblings as long as they're in the same school. And again, that means if we want, if we want, if we need bigger fixes, they're going to take longer. And then there, if you're attending a feeder school and you live outside the school's catchment area, either you moved or you transferred and you're in a grade that's being shifted, do you get to follow, you know, there's, it gets really complex, the different situations that our students are in when there's both a reconfiguration and boundary change. And we need to assess out each of those potential states and state what the rule is. So that there's some consistency. And again, the board can make exceptions at any time, but we should communicate in general what the expectation is and why that's in policy going forward. And if, if there, if we don't know what the rule is for a particular group of students, that's, that's not a good thing. We should have that assessed out before a decision is made. Part C of that section says that if you're not attending your neighborhood school, do, for whatever reason, you have the right to return to your neighborhood school. And I'm not sure if you actually have to file a transfer petition that is then automatically approved or not. I need to check with Judy.
You don't. I transferred last year and you do not have to put out a transfer paper. You just automatically can get in.
Okay. Because the opposite happened way back when. When my son was mistakenly assigned to a neighborhood, his neighborhood middle school, when he had rights to go to a different middle school and all of a sudden we got a class list from that other school. And we had to fill out paperwork and to get him into the school. But that's good to know, but we should, we should clarify that so that our families know what they need to do so that there are no surprises. Okay, uh, section four covers managing the system. Part A says there'll be a regular review of enrollment trends that hasn't been happening the last couple of years. And in the last 10 years, we've had two overcrowding train racks at Beverly Clary and at Bridger. We want to avoid that. Part B outlines what happens when there, an adjustment in boundaries is needed due to under enrollment or overcrowding. And it lists out the superintendent is going to get, you know, feedback from everybody involved, come up with a plan. And it lists six factors to be taken into consideration, recognizing that they may be in conflict with each other. But they should be part of the decision-making process. And again, when D-BRAC looked at this, when we were considering big boundary changes five years ago, we said, a couple of these are just out the window. We're going to have to impact a ton of kids in order to get to optimal use of facilities. And part C says, boundary changes need to be in the hopper by January of the calendar year to take effect in the next school year. So then my editorial opinion, again, if we were in relatively good balance, we could probably get on a program of doing regular minor adjustments that only affected a small number of students and families. And keep our system in balance. We haven't done that. So some big, big adjustments are necessary. So for that reason, I think we should separate out this long-term policy that operates in, in our, our better world to come. I think the full board should adopt a short-term, meaning two to three-year, when we finish out the enrollment balancing process. Here's the operating rules in the short-term that could be quite different in some particulars. in some particulars from what the long-term policy is. And I think we need to do that fairly soon to inform the Southeast discussion going forward and then North and Northeast as well. And part five covers that student assignment following boundary changes. And it, it says you can stay at that current, at your current school through the highest grade. Again, not really clear. Well, I think we can clarify that to, if we agree with it, we can clarify that a bit and clean it up. Or we can look at whether we want to change that. Again, short-term, long-term, might have different answers. Okay, I, let's see.
Director Bailey, before you.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I heard you right. Do you think some of this work needs to be done and clarified before we commence our Phase Two Southeast work?
Yes. There's, I mean, we, we saw the board making a decision about some students on the fly, basically, with what's come to be known as the ConStAM amendment. And I think we, you know, especially in terms of estimating what the numbers are going to be at schools in the event of a boundary change, the rules need to be really clear upfront for our staff and consultants to assess that out. I also want to point out that for, in a number of areas, we don't have good data. We don't know if a student is living outside of a catchment area. We don't know if they're there because of a transfer, they're there because they moved. We don't know if it was, in some cases, whether it was a lottery or a hardship transfer. And it would be great to, I, I actually asked Don Wolf to do an estimate on what it would take to keep track of that within our student information system.
So when might this committee, when does it believe it could refresh?
I'm sorry, say that again.
I'm sorry. Lost power for a moment there. I'm just trying to estimate, Director Bailey, when, when this important policy work might be completed so that there's clarity as we commence a Phase Two process. Because I know that this takes a lot of deliberation. So I don't know if that's a month, six months, a year?
So a thought I have is, first, my recollection is the ConStAM amendment was actually designed to, that, that the recommendation we got from staff was a violation of our policy or not consistent with our policy. And the ConStAM amendment was moving them back in, us back into policy, in, into compliance with policy. And then the second thing is, I would want to think more about having a short-term set of rules for one geography, because we just, in the last couple of years, made a number of changes and recon, you know, opened two middle schools, changed feeder patterns, and we did it with one set of rules. And, you know, a number of exceptions. And then if we're like, okay, but first, now for Southeast, we're going to come up with a different set of rules. And then when we're done in Southeast, we're going to create another set of rules. I'm, I have unfortunately a, a bad feeling about where that's going to land, the current set of schools. And vis-à-vis the, the schools that already went and the schools that are going to come after that. That's one thing about the, I'm not sure that that's, I'm sure I agree to that approach. And then second, just a broader, I guess, point I'd like to make around, there's a focus on Southeast and then the mention of high schools, and maybe it will include Northeast. But I, the, the biggest inequity in our enrollment policies is the fact that Jefferson doesn't have a neighborhood boundary. And I can't see how we, you know, shave what, 80 students off of, or however many off Franklin. And, and we, and we don't like address the big elephant in the room, which is that Jefferson doesn't have a neighborhood boundary. And it seems like the high school question should go all, all together. It should be, you know, if you've got, you know, Lincoln's overcrowded, Grant's overcrowded, Franklin's overcrowded, and then Jefferson doesn't have a neighborhood boundary, instead of saying, we're just going to take Southeast and we're going to have one set of rules, and then we're going to create a set of rules for everything else. To me, that, just the, I don't see the logic thread through that. So that, just when I think of like how we're going to create an umbrella set of room that are, that are treats students in a similar situation equitably and that's aligned with our racial equity and social justice policy, how, you know, what's the best way, way to do that? And to me, it's like taking all the high schools together versus, and having the same set of rules. Because, you know, withdrawing the sibling preference for, just for, you know, Franklin and Madison. You know, I think that has real consequences. As a parent who's had kids in more than one school, I've, it's, it's harder. And I think, you know, that's going to be a point we have, when I have a conversation with our broader community, because if we're going to apply that to Southeast, it's going to need to be, and as you said, Scott, this is going to be like across the district, you know, what, what do our families think about that? Just the challenges of picking kids up after school or different bus routes, being in different schools. I, I think there's a lot of implications for our families. And I don't want to have one set of rules just apply to Southeast.
Well, I, I'm confused why you're saying that, because we're talking about rules that would apply to Southeast, North and Northeast as we go across with enrollment balancing.
Well, then I, I guess, why would they, well, if, if it's not looking at all the high schools, then it seems like then we just have a set of rules for, so it's, so, for example, let's just take Lincoln's, you know, overcrowded, and I'm sure it's going to get more so when it opens. And are we just going to apply, say, for example, the, the, the current draft has, and maybe that's not the, the, the draft that's going to be used, has that there's no siblings following if you change the, the boundaries. So would that just apply to Franklin and Northeast? Or is it going to apply to, to Lincoln as, as well? And the other thing is, when we look at the, the current draft with the height, you stay in your same high school, like how, how does that apply to, to Jefferson? Okay, so if you say, hey, they're going to have a neighborhood, we're getting rid of the, you can choose where you want to, where you want to go to school, but Jefferson's going to have a neighborhood boundary, and we, and we have the, and you can stay in your high school, like, then, that you're in, then you're not going to have anybody potentially move. So I think we have to think through how this is, how we're going to have a, a set of rules that apply to everybody, and it's done equitably.
Well, that's.
Not equitably, it's done in a way that follows our racial equity and social justice rules. And the, some of the lowest income zip codes in the district are in outer Southeast.
That's exactly what I'm saying. We agree on that. You, you seem to think that there is a special set of rules that are going to apply to Southeast and nowhere else. And that's exactly what I'm not saying.
Okay, then I'm confused about what you're saying, because you said we might need to adopt a short-term set of rules and then.
Over the, yes, over the next three years or so, as we do enrollment balancing across the entire East Side. So I'm saying, what, whatever we adopt short-term for Southeast would apply also to Northeast and North as we move across.
What about the West Side?
So the West Side, I'm sure there will be ongoing boundary adjustments there, but that was the one part of D-BRAC that got done, for better or for worse. The, the, the biggest imbalances there were addressed. Will there be future imbalances? Probably.
They're going to have over 700 students.
At Lincoln? That's not the, that's not the forecast at all. Just saying.
So Rita, I think you're trying to interject, and I am too. Julia, I, as someone who also resides in Southeast, I appreciate your mindfulness of how Southeast is represented in all of this. And I, I feel like the point of all of this is to create clear, transparent, cohesive rules so that people know what to expect, they know how this, how some things work, and to make it so that, you know, there isn't a set of rules for the West Side and the East Side. But what I heard Scott say is we may, as we, like, our goal would be to cause the, the little, least amount of disruption. Temporarily, as we're fixing the system for a few years, we may need to, to take one look at things. And then in the future, when we have a more stable system, we can revisit rules. But I didn't hear him say, we're going to have special rules for the East Side and not for the West. But I, I can hear your concern about feeling like, I know that historically you felt like Southeast got, you know, kind of the experiment or the least protection. And I think, you know, you and I are both going to advocate for, for that to not be the case. But I, but I hear that concern in, in, I can hear how what Scott said triggered that for you. But I heard it slightly differently. And Rita, I know you couldn't jump in there, sorry.
And I'm open to that. Thank you, Bailey.
And I don't live in Southeast, but I feel the same way about Southeast. These are my kids too, so.
So I just wanted to kind of clarify, Scott and I had a conversation over the weekend about this. And I, I think when, as we were talking it through, I think what became really clear to the two of us is that the, the policy, we, we need to have a policy that will create a system that will allow for regular, you know, periodic assessments of enrollment, any enrollment issues that are out there and, and have a mechanism to make incremental boundary changes to respond to changing, you know, demographic flows. So that's, that's long-term, that's the big picture. And, and we do not currently have that. So when we're talking about the policy, we, since policies are supposed to not be time-bound necessarily, we need to look at the policy differently than the way we need to look at the acute situation that we're currently facing. So we probably need to have kind of two buckets of work that we, that we focus on for this spring. The, the policy work is, is longer-term, kind of systemic. But then we have several acute situations where incremental change is not going to accomplish the immediate goal of right sizing school enrollment to match the capacity of building. So we, what we were thinking was that if, if we think about it that way, then we can come up with some common agreements, some rules around how to, how to manage the acute situation in a way that is transparent and applicable universally over the next few years as we try to resolve the, the huge imbalances that are out there. And then the second buck, bucket would be the longer-term systemic policy. So that's, I think that's what we're talking about. And having said all of that, we are clearly not going to resolve really any of these questions today. This was kind of a, an intro. But I, I think Scott and I wanted to get a sense from the committee members, do you think this is a fruitful approach to the, the task ahead of us?
Can I ask a question, Dr. Moore? So I, I'm hearing you bifurcate short-term, long-term. This coming Monday, the board has a work session, for example, to try to land on some clear objectives. And I'm just wondering, where there's discrepancy or lack of clarity or policy doesn't exist in the way that the board wants it to or intends to, are we going to get caught in that cobweb on Monday as we try to arrive at some clarity for staff around Phase Two objectives and what the bumper rails are? Or we're going to find ourselves in an untenue position as staff?
Well, I think.
Go ahead, go ahead, Rita.
No, go ahead, go, go ahead.
So I, I think we need to get clarity so that we know ahead of time what we're actually saying. And if we have a policy that hasn't been looked at from an equity standpoint, in the short-term, we need to take a pretty hard look at that. Otherwise, and again, I voted against yanking students out of, who we thought were headed to Kellogg or were recommended by the Guiding Coalition to go to Kellogg, who are largely students of color, low income, and sent them back to their neighborhood school. Without, without considering the equity of that, again, right or wrong, whether we would have agreed to that or not. But just to say, that's current practice or policy, and I'm not even sure it's current policy, or whether it's in the A D or, or what. But we should be clear on that upfront so that the Southeast Guiding Coalition knows what the expectations are, so parents know what the expectations are. And, and it's not something that, that comes in at the last second.
That's all I'm requesting, is that we all be on the same page in that regard.
Exactly. So part of, part of this exercise was to kind of trying to come up with the key questions that we need to answer as a board to have clarity going forward.
I guess I would add then, does it make sense? I mean, a question I would have is like, does it make sense to, and is it equitable to begin the, the high school process in one quadrant in one of the most diverse high schools? Or does it make more sense to have the, the enrollment balancing exercise be by, in this case, by, you know, second, secondary be a second, be a separate discussion?
So, so Julia, go ahead, sorry, finish. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, and I was to say, and then my other question, and I appreciate hearing some of the background, since obviously I wasn't part of your weekend discussions, is, you know, how do we, because I think the, the natural, I think, position, I'll just say, I'm only going to speak for myself, because I can't speak for everybody in Southeast, but is like, hey, we got this before and are the rules going to change? So how do we build like com- but is like, hey, we got this before and are the rules going to change? So how do we build like confidence and transparency in we're not going to have one set of rules, like that whatever our overarching principles are, is there overarching principles? They're not like, because we're trying to solve a specific a specific problem and then they're going to change. Because I think then it's hard, because if you're sitting in outer southeast, you've had seven, you know, under-enrolled K8s, so the remainder of the big experiment. And it's hard not to think of like, hey, are these, like, if I'm giving this up, is everybody else going to be as well? So how do we make, like, what are our overarching principles? And we're going to stick to those. And those are the ones that are going to be the same, but it's not situational, like, because we're trying to solve a different problem.
I do think it's a little bit damaging. You know, I think I'd love us to get to a place where we think about PPS as a cohesive whole district. I know that, you know, there's east side, west side, north, south, and some of that is historic and some of that is about racial equity pieces. But I think I love what you're saying, Julia, about what are our values? And that, I mean, I think the rules are an articulation of our values. And so that it's not so much about what is the rule and is the rule the same for everybody? But, you know, our value is to provide equitable, excellent educational experiences for all students. And how we do that, you know, the enrollment, as Gotta Look Aya said lots of times, our key strategy around excellent education is not necessarily enrollment and balancing. It's a factor as far as like resource allotment, but it's not the key factor. So I also think like, we need to keep in mind where enrollment balancing falls in our priorities. But I think, Julia, what you're saying is we want to have something where groups of people aren't feeling like they're being marginalized, or like you said, you know, the K8 situation, that they're kind of left to languish. But that we want to do this well. And I do think we need to look at high schools in southeast, and we do want to talk about overcrowding and how we are looking at our diverse schools. And there's, some of it is values change over time. I think about, you know, we've got an elementary school that goes to Lane, but then those students go to Cleveland. And they're the only cohort that leaves Lane to go to Cleveland. And that was a decision made by a pass board to try to increase the diversity at Cleveland, which is great. And is that really what's best for those students to split the cohort after being in middle school? And so I think sometimes we, the decisions are complex and we're trying to make good decisions based on a lot of factors. And so I think it's hard to say the rules have to be the same all the time, and that's the only thing that looks like justice. We obviously want to be consistent and fair and transparent, but we also want to have our values be the premier thing. And so I think we get into this place of like territorialness or defensiveness sometimes because we want to protect people that we know have been marginalized. And we also, we want to make it fair. But how do we, how do we really look at what is just, what is right for kids to have the most excellent educational opportunity possible? And so I think we sometimes, it's how do we have that conversation in healthy ways? But I totally hear you, Julia, on that. The concern about doing the high schools this way, the concern about southeast. And I think that, you know, it's important for us to have these conversations. And I'm really hoping that the work session will be a fruitful place where we can really dive into what is the value? What is the thing that's most important to us next?
Okay, so we have gone way over time on this topic, and we've got a bunch of other things that we have on the agenda. Obviously, this is going to require more discussion, and I think some of this discussion is going to bleed over into Monday. But I think it's I think it's important that we kind of raise the issue of short-term versus long-term and policy versus resolution. And we will continue to talk about this unless we haven't, since we're not going to resolve any of this tonight. Unless there's a strong objection, I'm inclined to stop us here and move on to the next piece. Is that okay? Okay, all right. So so I'm going to, I'm going to actually ask for some direction from staff here. So we have three policies left on the agenda. Now, 6:08, we're obviously not going to get to all three by 7:00 PM. So I want to get some sense of relative urgency on these three policies. We've got comprehensive sexuality education, formal public complaint, and computer use.
I think that the comprehensive sex education should be a priority over the other two. Given some of the changes, I think
Okay.
The other two are important. And the update on the community, the family engagement on the formal complaint policy is, I think, a very brief piece. That might be the second. I know that you want to have room to talk about the real estate policy as well. So we could bump one or two to the next meeting if needed.
Right.
I can contact Dr. Packy right now if we wanted to. There's no urgency to the computer use policy. It's out of date, but it's but I think we can wait for the next hearing.
Okay. That's me. Good to know. That was actually the one that I was wondering if there was some urgency to it. But, okay, if we can postpone that, so let's postpone it. And then, so let's leap into the comprehensive sexuality education. And we originally allocated 30 minutes to it. We've talked about this a little bit before, so we could shave a little bit of time off. That would be good. But I also want to make sure that we give it an appropriate level of focus. So who's going to take the lead on this one?
So Jenny Withacom will take the lead, but I think she needs to come in. There she is.
Okay.
Hello. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for taking the time to review our comprehensive sexuality education policy. Would you like me to go ahead and dive in?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we presented the comprehensive sexuality education policy a few meetings ago because we wanted to get feedback on whether we should continue to have a comprehensive sexuality education policy as a standalone or move to having a comprehensive health education policy, which included our comprehensive sexuality education policy as a piece of it. And the overwhelming feedback was that comprehensive health education policy made the most sense and would be a great way to codify the many laws, mandates, and best practices in health education. So what we've presented to you with feedback a couple of the directors is the comprehensive health education policy with, you know, specifically calling out comprehensive sexuality education as well as a number of other health education components. So in your packet, you have a lot of information. Happy to answer questions about it. But what I can tell you in kind of in brief is that the comprehensive sexuality education policy that we had passed several years ago was created in a very robust way. So it included community partners, parents, students, staff, school administrators, and was given a lot of feedback when it was first passed. So there is a document that actually outlines the process that we went through for passing the first comprehensive sexuality education policy. And I just want to have that for you as kind of some background and context. Within that report, which was conducted by the Oregon Health Authority, there are also a number of recommendations because as of kind of the process, we had Oregon Health Authority do an evaluation of the process that we went through, which was prior to us doing our scope and sequence. So there are also a number of recommendations in that report for kind of your next time you do a policy revision and a comprehensive sexuality education implementation plan, which will be the next step in our process once we have our policy approved. So do know that a number of the recommendations that are in there have to do with reviewing data, again, speaking with community partners, revising the GBC, and making amendments to kind of the structure of how health education, specifically comprehensive sex ed, is taught across the district K-12. So that's kind of our next step. But I wanted to have that report in there for you. In addition, I included our 2019 Youth Risk Behavior Survey reports, which is health behavior outcome data from our ninth through 12th graders and PPS. It's all pre-COVID data, but it's also what we will use to revise our scope and sequence in GBC as we move forward. And it will help us inform kind of that next iteration of implementation for comprehensive sexuality education specifically, but of course, health education more globally. And then the final report that we included in there is as part of our Centers for Disease Control Grant on Comprehensive Sexuality Education, Safe and Supportive Environments, and School Health Services. We have been conducting research on how the implementation of our programs is going. And so all of those results from teachers and administrators, and this spring we'll be collecting data from students, will also inform the creation of the implementation plan slash administrative directive for this policy. So I just wanted to have all of that available, too, so you could kind of see what will be guiding some of our work as well as our new processes around creating administrative directives with our community engagement teams and our restorative justice practices. So that's all there. I know it's a ton of information. But with regards to the policy, what we've done is, like I said, we've kind of given our, some background information around comprehensive health education. And then as an end note, included all of the laws and mandates that are required by Oregon and through PPS to be included in health education in grades K through 12. And again, we're doing that to elevate the learning around health education and help, you know, whether it's district staff, parents, community members, students, know what are the many things that are guiding our work, both philosophically and legally. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just want to say I'm appreciative of the work and especially in that, which never occurred to me in terms of health education, giving students the tools to be a knowledgeable consumer, for lack of a better word, of health services is, I mean, it's mind-boggling in our crazy healthcare system right now. Just say that. So any tools we can give to our students to try to evaluate how to get good care. And of course, it's a huge racial equity issue as well. We know. I was just reading the other day, the infant mortality rate, the saddest statistic in the world, is three times as high for African-American children as white children in the US. But only quote-unquote, one and a half times as high if the delivering doctor is African-American. And that just is incredibly sad. But that's just one piece of what our students will have, are dealing with, and will have to deal with in our healthcare system. So anything we can do around that to help our students better figure out this system is great.
Thank you.
And I think, Scott, it goes deeper than that. It's not just helping our students figure out the system, but it's creating the next generation of doctors who understand that they need to listen to their black patients. You know, that there is a, what studies have found is there's a dismissal of black pain or black symptoms. And so I think doing this comprehensive health education can shift that narrative as well, that people are believed in health settings. So we're training not just the future patients, but the future doctors as well. And I think if we start early and make it, I think, I love what it says about the, you know, the comprehensive sex education being inclusive of LGBTQ folks, because I think that also speaks to the future doctors who will already be able to have some understanding of trans patients and some of what those folks may need. So we're creating not just consumers, but also practitioners. So thank you for your work, Jenny. This policy, I think, really is part of the whole child work that we do at PPS, that we also, you know, see children as full people that we're, I think about the graduate portrait and that person that graduates from our system sort of fully realized as a leader and as someone with empathy and someone who's advocating for racial justice. This policy, I think, contributes to that development of that graduate portrait incredibly.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, who was on the work group?
On the work group for this policy?
Yeah, sorry. This is just an easy one, I hope.
It was, we didn't, it was Jenny and I. Oh, right, we had, because of the short turnaround time, and this was completely my fault. Ailey and Scott were on the work group. However, we met at a time that neither was available to meet. So it was.
Okay. So that wasn't a trick question. It was just, I was wondering who had input already on it. So a couple of questions. I think it's remarkable that the legal citations are almost one-third of the length of the policy. So these are, are you guys getting an echo? About midway through that first long paragraph, it references, research shows that school health programs and policies, do you mean health education? I mean, we have, sometimes we were talking about health education, health programs, because then when health program, I'm thinking about like the school-based clinics and other things like that. Do we mean health education in that reference?
Sorry, Director. You're working up, so I missed where in.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I either, it came across as garbled. I don't know if it's just me or.
Sure. I hear in the paragraph he starts that you mentioned. Sorry.
It's the second paragraph of the policy, and it's like that 12th line down. It's a sentence that says, "Research supports that health programs and policy may be one of the most efficient ways."
So school health programs, I think you bring up a good point. It actually is kind of a broad, kind of like that whole child perspective. So that would be inclusive of the health education curriculum, even like counseling services, as well as school-based health centers, or anyone that would support health at the school level. So like even things inclusive of like dental vans or vision screenings or things like that. So the definition of school health program is pretty all-encompassing.
And so this is maybe a philosophical question, is this a, the title is comprehensive health education policy?
The title is comprehensive health education policy.
Does that mean? Is anybody getting an echo? Or is it actually a comprehensive school health education programs and policy? And then, because most of this is about health education, which to me seems appropriate, but it's narrower. And it's like, if it is a more whole-child approach, like, should there be sections on the, you know, sections on the other pieces? Because most of this is health education, which I think is, which I think is great. So I'm just trying to figure out what we're trying to accomplish here. Is it primarily to be focused on health education? So that's just a bigger question. So that's just a bigger question. And then a smaller item is at the very end, it references the G B C. And I'm just wondering for, to make the policy more timeless, if we just it should just say should be aligned with the P P S, you know, whatever central curriculum. There's another word for whatever our general curriculum is, but I I just, things change every time what we call them.
Sure. I think that makes sense. So I think instead of G B C, probably scope and sequence is the more timeless language, because that that applies to how the standards themselves are organized across the year and is independent of like guaranteed viable curriculum is a more of a philosophical stance. Curriculum is more often thought of oftentimes as a the materials that we use. So I think you're right, scope and sequence is probably a better phrase to use there. And that can be easily adapted. And I definitely understand your point about school health programs. Because you're right, in this policy, what we're really, really targeting is health education and a, a more holistic school health system does encompass a number of other departments and things that are outside the scope of health education. That is something that I, you know, very much would love for us to create and substantiate and and get written into into policy. But I think you're right, at this point, what we're really focusing on is the health education piece, which is what I have, you know, domain over versus the much broader picture of coordinated school health, which is lots of different departments.
My comment on this is this comprehensive health education policy is it's quite good. I don't see very many places I'd change. Like I said, I was more asking the question, just like, what are we? What are we trying to achieve? But if this is a comprehensive health education policy, to to me, I think it sort of provides the right overarching references and sort of what our value, our values are.
I guess I would ask if that is, we do update the policies every two years and I I would ask if if that is something that the board is interested in is creating more of a coordinated, to your point, a coordinated school health policy where we would work with the many different departments that that touch on these various aspects. Maybe for this next iteration, that is the kind of the groundwork that we could lay over the next two years to get to a place where we are creating that more coordinated school health vision. I'm very interested in that, if that's something the board is interested in.
I actually had a question about the section that you're referencing, I think. This is the review of policy and comprehensive sexuality education plan. That section. So this seems to call out the sexuality education from the rest of health education. And I'm wondering if that is is this responding to statutes? Like, is it, it is, is it a particular requirement that the sexual education plan and policy has to be reviewed every two years?
It is, yes.
It is, okay. Okay, so so then your question, Jenny, was, do we want to make it more global? Was that, was that your question? Did we lose Jenny?
I think what Jenny was, I think what she was suggesting is like, this is the health education policy, but if the board were so inclined to develop something that is broader, that talks about school health generally, that has all these other components besides just the education curriculum, is that? I don't know if Jenny's come back or.
Yeah, I I think hopefully her volume will.
I think she froze. Oh, there she is.
Okay, are you back, Jenny?
I'm back. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm back. Southeast electricity and internet is still quite.
Okay, so I I'm having difficulty hearing.
Jenny? Can you hear me or or no?
You're really broke.
Yeah, you're you're breaking up a lot. So Sarah, can you pick this up?
So what Jenny was saying, that if we're going to review this in another two years, that would be a nice arc of time that if as a district, we wanted to start thinking about having a comprehensive health policy that would be more inclusive, because you know, like that hits on student nutrition and our counselors and the health centers at different schools and and really kind of like that, that more overarching health policy. Jenny was saying that that's something that she's very passionate about and that if that was an interest of the board, that as we worked up to the next review two years from now, like this would, if if we're given that as an interest, then the two-year arc would be a reasonable period to to kind of to explore that and be able to to report back on that for the next update.
So I'm going to I'm going to say I think that probably would be an interest in two years. I don't think we can say definitively at this point, because a lot can happen in two years. And, you know, there would be another board that would be making that call. But I think it's probably a reasonable thing for you guys to be thinking about over the next two years. Does that sound reasonable?
Definitely.
Okay. And I had, I had one other question, which is very minor. It's at the very end, related policy. I'm wondering if we should also include, and I I'm not sure I've got the name of the policy right, but I think it's safe and substance-free learning environment.
I don't know why you remember the name. We only spent several months talking about it.
I know, I know, but I, I know, I know there's substance-free learning environments. I remember that. But anyway, can we, should we include that on this list? It's not a big item, but. Is that a crazy thing to do? Because if it's not crazy, can we just add it?
Okay, we can add it.
Okay, thank you. And I think, that's all I had. Does anybody else have any question? Or comment? Okay, so do we feel comfortable moving this on to a first reading?
Actually, I'm sorry, I have one question. Is there?
I knew I should have called it. Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, well, you know, I I said it was well-written, but I had a question about teacher certification. And this has been an issue with like P E and some other subjects of like, hey, when we do staffing, we're like, not, we're going to get, you know, we've got to make some reduction. So we're going to unassign a teacher who has been, say, the health teacher. And for some reason, I think there has been more in like health and P E over the years. And I'm wondering if this health education, whether we're indicating that health education should be taught generally by those who have training in health education.
And so that is, it is our recommendation that that happen. And for some of our schools, it is somebody who has a licensure in health. And that definitively at the high schools is what happens. At K five, it is part of the core curriculum that our our general ed teachers teach and and we've done significant professional development on that. And then because of some of the amazing grant writing work that Dr. Withacom has done, we've actually done extensive professional development at the middle school level. And so even in our middle schools where it has been a teacher assigned as like 10% outside of their field of expertise, Jenny's team has then been able to do extensive P D with them. And so we have avoided putting that specifically in the policy, because we don't we, while it is, it is what we would prefer, we don't want to put a school in a bind if if it doesn't fully work out with with other things that are happening in the school or the size of enrollment or or that sort of thing. And so it it's not, it is, it's what we recommend in the staffing guide. But it was not included in this, in this policy.
And is that true for other subject areas at those levels? I mean, does that generally track other subjects for, I'm assuming it doesn't elementary generally?
So, I mean, again, in general, you want to teach your teaching with a specific endorsement or licensure, but Oregon law allows for a teacher to teach 10% outside of their endorsement. And so across our schools, we do have, you know, like maybe it's an elective here, or maybe because of enrollment, there's one extra science class and you know, and and so somebody has a lot of knowledge, but doesn't have the endorsement yet or or those sorts of things. And so it it it's not the norm. But but it is a flexibility, because you don't always have the exact number of kids taking a class as as perfectly matches up with a full F T E.
Yeah. So Director Moore, to answer your question, I don't have an issue with, I'm supportive of moving it to a first reading, if that's what you were about ready to call the question. I do want to explore this a little bit more, because I feel like through my kids' experience and my time in P P S is that this was often a place where hey, we got to assign somebody to teach health and it became one of the places where I think there was less alignment, and I'd say this is all anecdotal, less alignment with what people's endorsements or licensure was than like, you don't have a, somebody teaching music who's not got a music endorsement. So I, I think maybe I want to circle back between the first and second reading and just do a click down on that. Not that it would change the policy, but I'm just curious about that, because I I do think to deliver this excellent health education, most often you want somebody who that's their endorsement or licensure.
And and I would just anecdotally share that I was listening in to a Cleveland High School health class the other day, where my child may be a student, and I was impressed by the content of the class and the things they were exploring in relationship to health. So I do think, Julia, you're right, that there is this incredible standard. And I know that, you know, the vast majority of our teachers who are health teachers reached that standard. And I know that sometimes, I remember when, when health came into Selwood, you know, we had the art teacher and she was like, okay, now I have to teach sex ed to sixth grade and eighth grade students in the same classroom, and I'm not sure I'm prepared for that. And luckily, you know, Dr. Wouldacom and ever others provided a great amount of professional development and resourcing to to make that happen. But I know that that can be a difficult subject for teachers. And so when we do have people who have that licensure and that passion for that work, it is what's best for students.
I can, I can add to that. A lot of our traditional middle schools are are moving in that direction, have moved in that direction over the last couple of years of of hiring a, and then health educator. And I will add, I not to, I know you all have been talking D B R A C a lot, but the D B R A C process actually helps us in many ways in health education, get an endorsed person in there, because you can hire one point out educator and they will have their schedule full of health education. At a traditional middle school where they create a much harder, it's a much harder process. So we've definitely been leaning that direction. We've also been trying to, just before COVID, we were starting to collaborate with some of the local colleges, because we have a number of teachers who were were teaching a section of health and have just really developed a passion for it and want to add that endorsement and training. And so we want to help them do that. That's definitely something we want to pick back up.
You tied everything together today in our committee meeting. Thank you. Another data point.
Rita, we've lost your.
Sorry. I'm going to call the question. For board members, all in favor of passing this along to the full board for consideration of adoption for first reading? Okay, I saw three thumbs up. I'm a thumbs up. So, okay. So we will move this on to first reading.
Dr. Moore, just to set expectations about timing and make sure we're aligned, the board packet for the two twenty-three meeting goes out tomorrow. So the preparation of a staff report and all those pieces would likely kick this to the March nine meeting. That's okay with everybody. All right.
Okay, good reminder. Thank you. Um, okay, so next on the agenda is the formal public complaint. And we had allocated fifteen minutes for this. Alexis Burnett was going to walk us through the family surveys that was done. Is, is Alexis here? I don't see her.
She is.
Oh, yeah, she's there. Okay.
Okay.
So Alexis, I'm going to I'm going to do the unforgivable and ask if you could shorten your presentation a bit. I I want to make sure that we have enough time to actually hear, hear what you have to say, but we're, we're bumping up against the deadline, so.
And Alexis, I also just wanted to, I wanted to let everyone know I have to dip at six fifty, I have to leave at six fifty for a work commitment. So I I may leave in the middle of something and and my apologies.
And Chair Moore, can I ask a question? We are still going to get to the property.
Yes. It's going to be a very brief thing, but I I think we we will almost certainly not get to computer use today. So anybody who's hanging on for that, tune in next time. Okay, Alexis?
Hi, thank you all for your time. I will speak fast, but not too fast. And I have results from the formal complaint process survey we conducted in January. It surveyed two hundred thirty-three complainants in the past eight years. And of all of those complainants, we heard from sixty-three, or a total response rate of twenty-seven. For surveys at P P S, we find that is pretty typical without any targeted outreach. And this survey was only administered with an initial reminder and reminders for a couple of days afterwards, due to the timeline and getting a report to the staff working on this. And generally, we have an idea of how the experience of the formal complaint process is, a lot of it is what I expected based on what I've heard from staff. Highlights are that about a third of complainants felt that they were given an opportunity to share their side of the story. And another third agreed that staff were professional and courteous. And that's a little bit in contradiction with where we heard the most areas for improvement. We heard that complainants didn't feel heard. And fairness of the complaint process, as well as the length of time it takes to go through it. was another main point. And so my understanding coming to this meeting is that the next step is revising the policy language. And I highly cannot recommend a survey. You will get the same amount or less disengagement because the language is essentially a block of text. And for surveys, you want to avoid that appearance of a giant chunk of text as much as possible. Something we did get that's very valuable in this survey are folks that the complainants interacted with leading up to filing a complaint. And these are PPS employees or community members who can really speak to some of the lived experiences in terms of implementation of the policy, as well as maybe some familiarity, familiarity with the language. And so I just wanted to present that quick summary. I hope that's enough to answer any questions.
And Alexis, thank, I want to thank Alexis because she's been a really helpful partner in devising the survey. And Stephanie Soden and Lydia started this work before they each moved on to their new roles. But I, I'll tell you, all my interactions with Alexis have just been, she just makes us smarter and more thoughtful. I want to bridge a little bit what she said about going back out to families. At the last policy committee meeting, there was a request from the committee that we send a copy of the draft policy or the draft policy changes to those families who responded to this survey. And when we talked about that with Alexis, her feedback, as she just repeated, was that that is not, that actually undermines the I've been heard feeling because we're sending them an email with a document in it. And that if we want to do further family engagement, there are other ways to do that. And so we have talked as a staff team about how to get additional feedback on the process, which the policy is part of the process, but it is far from the entire experience of what it's like to go through that, as we've talked about several times. And we think that some additional conversations and perhaps focus groups with building administrators and some families would, you know, would be helpful again to the, the experience and the process. But that realistically, that can't, that can't and candidly shouldn't be done before the end of the school year is we are prioritizing where building administrators and folks are spending their time. So those are the, I just want to give you a flavor of the conversations we've had since the last committee meeting when that request was made. We, we think there are opportunities to move the policy forward with work to be done on all the pieces that support the implementation of the policy continuing. But that's a decision for the committee to make. I don't want to presume that that's the path, but I think that's the fuller context for Alexis's statements about that.
Can you tell me how many people responded to the survey that, that are in the results shown in table two?
Yes. Out of the 233 in the last eight years, there were 63 responses. And that's 27% altogether.
Okay. Those aren't pretty numbers, just to state the obvious. And not, not to take anything away from those folks' experience, which was by and large, majority negative. We, we don't know if these were the unhappy people who really responded. But it's, that's clearly a metric we would want to work on. Yeah. That, so thanks, thanks for compiling that.
Sure. Happy to help inform conversations with data always.
Yeah.
And a quick question about like, so it's from the past six years, right? Were the majority from the past three years, like where did most of the respondents fall in?
I have that in a table somewhere, but not prepared. It will take me a little bit to get with the plates I'm juggling. But if you're interested, I can get it by summer. Which is when I would recommend these conversations start happening so that some of the other giant worries are off of folks' plates. Yeah. Any other questions?
Okay. So I think we.
I have, I have a question. I mean.
Go ahead.
Were, were there no open ended questions?
There were. It's been a while since I've looked at this.
There, there were.
There might have been, but nothing that was, there's a fuller report that I sent to the staff group. I can summarize those better when I'm not working off of my slides.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see the, like, just all the feedback we got. I'm in the camp that, you know, whenever this kick, kick, this gets kicked out of committee and it's got a staff report and we have the policy with the draft changes that we. That's fine, but I don't know why.
Okay, Julia, we lost you for a minute.
Okay. That, once the committee sends it out to the board for first reading and we have a staff report that outlines the changes. I mean, we have everybody's email address. I don't know why we wouldn't just send it. Like here's the policies, here's the change, you know, thank you for participating in the survey or we surveyed you earlier. Here's, you know, where we landed. You know, do you have any comment? It just seems like the most basic, I mean, it doesn't seem, you know, people can like, hey, I don't want to read that all, you know, I'm not going to respond. When I look at some of these numbers, I mean, they're a little bit troubling in sort of people's interaction with, you know. And I guess I'd like to see more, I'm always into disaggregated data. You know, like the, the comment about the staff is that, was that school staff or was that central office staff? You know, there's been a lot of discussion about just the process, I guess, to me, this gives me broad strokes, but it doesn't necessarily tell me what it means for like how we, how we should adjust the, the policy. But it does tell me that people think like there should be some changes in the, in the process.
Yeah. The second table with the questions on it are as written. Those were close ended. And in order to get at the lived experiences, we don't have that detail in the survey. I can see the value in, in email going out to the original respondents to get open-ended comments, but I can't guarantee that those will answer the questions you want about language changes. It's, in my experience with community engagement, there's, when there isn't a guarantee of, if these folks are already engaged, they've had kids out of school for several years. They are liable to ignore an email from the district. From my latest experience and especially with the folks who have gone through the formal complaint process. There is a level of disengagement in this data set that suggests that we need to approach them more thoughtfully or do data collection in a much, a much more careful way.
Okay. So I am, thank you for that. And I, I'm mindful of the time. We are rapidly running out of time. So I think, I, I think the, the question at hand is, based on what you've heard, do you feel comfortable, you, you committee members, do you feel comfortable moving ahead with the current language? The alternative, I think, is if we were to wait for any additional feedback, given what is, given what everybody is facing over the next few months. I think realistically, we would not get any additional feedback until probably late summer at best. Liz, you look like you want to say something.
Well, I, I would just want to just tweak a little bit. I think what the, I think the current language, there's still, it's been a while, it's been several months since the committee has looked at it. And so I would not, if, if there's a decision to go forward with the policy revisions without further engagement, then I think the committee members could have the next meeting cycle to review and see if there's anything else. And, and based on what they've seen so far in this data and come back and consider that final language in the next meeting, not necessarily tonight at 6:54.
Right. I was, I was not, yeah. I, I didn't mean to suggest that we were going to vote it out of the committee tonight. It was just like, are, are you comfortable continuing to work on it now? Or putting it on a back burner pending more feedback? There, there are upsides and downsides to everything. There, there is a certain upside to memorializing some changes that were, especially the ones that were highlighted by staff as, based on their experience of working with the process. So.
And regardless, staff will continue to work on the, the process and the experience because we know there's a lot of work to do. And that's on, that's getting more feedback. That's also enhancing some of the training. That's a bunch of pieces about what that family experience is like going through that. But we'll do that either way.
Right. And, and it's probably more likely than not that a lot of, a lot of the issues that have emerged are around implementation rather than the policy itself. So, okay. So I'm, because I haven't heard anything. I, I'm going to assume that we're okay continuing to work on the policy. And it will, it will appear again on the next, probably on the next committee agenda.
Yeah. Can we have that data sent, sent out? Just so we can get the background. And the other thing I guess I would be interested in is, if you look at the, on this survey number, the two lowest ones are PPS staff were knowledgeable and PPS staff were professional and courteous. Is what we think in, in the policy changes? How do we crosswalk policy changes to that feedback?
Okay. So.
We will send out, we will send out the full report. I was just texting with Roseanne to see if Stephanie had done that. And I, I will just, we'll send it again if it's been done. And if it's not been done, our apologies and we will, apologies and we will.
Yeah. If it's been done, my apologies for asking.
I probably has. I, I trust your memory more than mine on this, Julia. So we will sort that out and get that out ASAP.
Okay. Okay. So let's, let's stop that here. And I want to make sure that we have, we still have public comments. Cara, do we have anybody signed up for public comments?
Yes.
How many?
Three.
How many people?
Three.
Three people. Okay. All right. Well, um, we're going to go overtime. We're going to go beyond seven o'clock. So probably not long over, hopefully not long over. But I want to make sure that we get some clarification of some questions that have arisen over the proposed preservation, maintenance and disposition of district real property revisions. So Liz, could you, could you walk us through the, some of the issues that have emerged and the response?
Yes. I think there were, as it relates to the policy language itself or the drafted language itself, a question emerged. And we talked about this to some extent at the last policy committee meeting and I think at the board meeting, but questions continue to emerge about whether a long-term lease is defined as at least five years in that policy in the draft language. In section D, I think it is. And because I have no power and at someone else's house, I don't have a printed copy of anything in front of me today, and I apologize for that. But Mary will keep me honest on my references here. Well, I have dueling screens. The, the, the at least, the definition of a long-term lease as being at least five years is not intended to in any way constrain the district from entering into leases that are longer than that. And the, the reference in that same paragraph to the termination rights is a reflection of, I think the, the policies, one of the significant thrusts of the policy, which is the district needs to be able to utilize its building over the long term and to, to have access to buildings as its needs change. But it is not, it is, I think, as I understand, the committee's intent intentionally drafted to provide quite a bit of flexibility to be negotiated with each tenant, depending on the length of the lease, the purpose of the building and any number of factors. So I, I do not think the policy language, it, it says it needs to be contemplated, but it doesn't say how, by how much, how little. So I think there's quite a bit of, I, I think the, the five-year issue is not at all a constraint. And I think the termination rights as it, as drafted, has a lot of flexibility to be customized for a particular building, for a particular tenant in a particular negotiation and lease drafting. But those are the questions I have fielded since the last, the, the board meeting when this was first read.
Okay. So given, given that, I guess I, I'm going to ask the committee members, do you anticipate wanting to make suggestions for any additional revisions to the policy?
I do. Would you like me to give you at a high, high level what they are?
Um, can you do it in one sentence?
Well, I need to tell you where the sentence is going to be. So this is, this is just conceptual. On page two, the D, it's going to be a long sentence, sale of re property, of real property, third paragraph, second sentence, adding in language, whenever possible, any district property sale should be, should be to a public entity or an entity that advances equity and the district's racial equity and social justice policy that intends to actively use a property for a public, for public purposes or advances racial equity. And then that we have similar something, a construct in the, in the lease section that's similar as well. So that there is this guiding principle. I mean, we talk about in our racial equity and social justice policy and lens about utilizing our resources. In fact, we quote, to achieve educational equity, PPS will provide additional.
I, I'm, I'm going to ask you, we don't need the, we don't need the full exposition right now. So you have some suggestions. Okay. Can you, can you send them to Liz and Mary and committee members? And we can talk about them at the next policy committee meeting. Okay?
We're not having another policy committee meeting before our second reading though.
Well, we're going to have to postpone second meeting then.
Well, we are. I think, I think the second reading is March 9th and the next policy committee meeting is March 8th.
Okay. I'll, I'll bring it to them, but I, I don't want to delay, but I don't think we should have to delay. That this is relating to. I, I can bring it to the full board. I mean, when we have a second reading or I'll share it with the full board.
Um, I, I think it would be good to have a discussion at the committee level so that the committee would be able to respond at the, at the full board level. I mean, when it goes before the full board. We, we can work out the details. I'm, I'm looking at the clock. We're running out of time. So, so we will, we'll add that to the agenda for the next policy committee meeting. And, okay. So I want to take public comment. And, okay, so I want to take public comment. And so we'll probably be running about 10 minutes late for everybody who's watching. Cara, can you, can you invite the people who have signed up for public comment?
Yes. There's, some of them are on their way. We'll start with Justin Godoy.
Hello. I'm here. Good evening. Are we good?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Justin Godoy, G-O-D-O-Y. My pronouns are he, him, his. And I'm a fifth grade teacher at Riggler Elementary School in northeast Portland in the beautiful Cooley neighborhood. Riggler's student population is approximately 69% Latinx, 7% Black, and 47% of the students qualify for free and reduced lunch by direct certification. First, I'd like to thank Superintendent Guerrero for helping me write tonight's testimony. I thought his words in a February 2020 interview with KGW were perfect for this foundation discussion. When answering a question regarding critics' views that undocumented students could be a financial strain on PPS, Guerrero stated, "I think every dollar we invest in children and youth pays dividends in our ability to be a strong community, be a strong state, be a strong country. When not all students are afforded an equitable, high-quality educational opportunity, we see the effects of that. This statement from the leader of PPS is completely at odds with the current structure of the foundation system at PPS. A child at Riggler does not have the same high-quality educational opportunities as a student from a school that fundraises enough money to purchase more teachers, period. Some may argue that Title I schools technically receive more money per student, but this cannot be a justification for foundations. A child at a Title I school has a world of other barriers and obstacles that are not offset by the district's allocation of funds to these schools. Riggler has foundations, we have never had a foundation. We receive a fluctuating donation based on the overall PPS parent fund pool for the year. We received $30,000, $20,000, and $26,000 the last three years. This unpredictable donation does not come even close to meeting the needs of our students, and yet our community has no backup financial security. Financially, Riggler does not have the privilege and wealth of these large foundation schools, but we are also strained for the most precious resource of the privileged, time. Time for our communities to leave their homes or jobs and support the large undertakings required for massive foundations. This should not be the burden of any parent who wishes the best for their children, as we all do. We have all seen the often circulated cartoon to explain equity, right? With three people looking over a wall and the boxes they are standing on are all different sizes, they've been circulating a thousand emails. Everyone gets what they need, right? On the surface, this is the PPS foundation system. Everyone puts in, it gets distributed according to need. But if we actually look closest, the smallest box is a sturdy, strong foundation, sorry, I had to get that pun in, filled with hundreds of thousands of dollars and extra teachers. And the biggest box, given to those with the greatest need, the Riggler kids, the Title I's, is barely holding itself together. And therefore, it can't be a surprise when it collapses and our most vulnerable students fall. I will leave you once again with the wise words of our superintendent. When we don't make investments in all our students, in every student, we pay the price later. So I understand that we are afraid of PPS, that if we will lose revenue if you end the ability for school, for local school foundations to privately fund teaching positions at our public schools. I'm here to tell you today that Riggler is not afraid. We are ready for you to fix the system. PPS students today and PPS students of the future need you to fix the system now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shanice, your glasses are amazing, by the way. Sorry, I have two minutes, had to get that out.
Cara Hasky?
My name is Cara Hasky, H-A-S-K-E-Y. My pronouns are she, her. I am here tonight to request apology, policy change related to fundraising. While there is much to be applauded in the educational experience my two daughters have had thus far at Alameda Elementary, I am now profoundly aware that it has come at a cost. Alameda has a robust local school foundation that raises in excess of $100,000 year after year. Within weeks of our arrival, the pitches began. Most were delivered with a palpable feeling of urgency. We were invited to house parties where we were asked to write checks. We were solicited for auction items, encouraged to host signup parties and asked to pull students from class to create art projects to be sold at auction. I shrugged off my ill feelings about privately raising funds for public employees and told myself it was okay to do these things because it was the only way to deal with our overcrowded classrooms, that it was a community-building endeavor that not only helped our school, but also supported the needs of others. I know now that was wrong. I will not deny there are unmet needs at Alameda. There are unmet needs at every school in our district due to decades of underfunding that continues today. But private fundraising is not meeting those needs, nor is it the way to solve the problem. I've borne witness to the damage this type of fundraising causes. Volunteers pushed to emotional breaking points, kids denied access to teacher-led activities because it was only available to a limited number at auction, and adults who have felt excluded, unnoticed, or guilty for not participating or contributing financially. Connecting with fellow parents and educators across our district has taught me that this story is not unique to Alameda, and there is a greater harm inflicted on our district. Data clearly demonstrates that the current system overwhelmingly benefits predominantly white and wealthy school communities like Alameda, just as it has for the past 20 years. It is a small number of families that are benefiting from preserving this status quo, and it is not in alignment with our shared vision of a school system where every student has what they need to evolve into a compassionate, critical thinker, fully prepared to lead a more socially just world. We must acknowledge our current system is broken and unjust and work together to create a better Portland for all. All staffing and the basics of what we as a community consider an appropriate and equitable education should be paid for with public funding. Now is the time to put an end to the scarcity mindset that upholds structural racism and instead align our actions and distribution of resources with our collective values. Our policy should be a statement of those values. So I'm calling for you to make the necessary policy changes to put an end to private funding of PPS FTE or equivalents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Mermis?
Hi, my name is Megan Mermis, M-E-R-M-I-S, and my pronouns are she, her. I'm the parent of a fourth grader at Laurelhurst, one of the top 10 fundraising schools in the district. I'd like to speak on the practical and moral concerns I have with how local school foundation fundraising exacerbates rather than alleviates inequity and the board's role in supporting the system. I cannot see how allowing schools to fundraise for their own benefit contributes to PPS's stated vision of advancing racial equity and social justice. Public schools exist for the public good. I'd like to cite the work of Rob Reich, an expert on the role of philanthropy in civil society, who has written specifically about private fundraising in public schools. He argues that the question we should consider is whether public policy should not merely permit, but provide incentives for parents to give money to public schools so that their children can receive a better education than they otherwise would. In the case of PPS, those incentives are more teachers and aides to benefit the fundraising school. We're all aware of how woefully underfunded our schools are. Those schools who are most in need suffer the most from these fundraising shortfalls, funding shortfalls. But our solution has been to allow schools to buy their way out of the public funding structure, further increasing already tragic inequities. We've condoned a system that allows a very small number of wealthier, whiter schools to raise large sums of money to primarily benefit themselves while donating a small percentage to be shared across dozens of other schools and calling that equity. It is a feel-good measure that allows us to tell ourselves that we are doing good for others while we do a good for ourselves. It is a losersy, a cover for wealthy schools adding abundance to privilege. And there is another side effect of the local school foundation model, and perhaps this is the most damaging to the future of our public school system. Not only does it mean more funding for already better-off schools, this model distracts and absolves us, parents, administrators, and leadership of our true responsibility to advocate for the state to fully fund public schools. There are many things we need to do to fix school funding, both to ensure robust funding and to make it equitable. The central question we need to ask is, for the benefit of who? If PPS is committed to equity, we need to rethink private fundraising at public schools. And that begins with reexamining the board's policy that allows local school foundations to use private money to buy teachers at their schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That concludes what we have.
Okay. All right. Since, since we've run long, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to stop us here. Thanks, everybody, for another busy meeting. See you again in three weeks with the board meeting in between. And thank you for everything.
Director Moore, and I look forward to our, my budget proposal coming to the board on March 9th. So just a calendar reminder, given that we're an administration that values the equitable distribution of resources, it's another opportunity where you can transparently see how we make sure to pay attention to our underserved schools. So a school like Riggler benefits from additional positions at an average of 8,800 per pupil versus a school like Alameda that functions with 6,000 per pupil. So I'm looking for the opportunity to tell that narrative a little bit more comprehensively to our community.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We are adjourned. Thank you again.